And welcome to the Township Whitewater Region's Regular Council Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th. We're going to call ourselves to order here at 1:00 PM. And I'll note that we have six members present. councillor Bell is not present yet, may join us mid-meeting if possible. Excellent. Next item on the agenda is our National Anthem. If I can get folks to rise, please, and face the flag. The next item on the agenda is our Land Amendment. And I've asked councillor Moore to do the first.
As we gather, we would like to acknowledge on behalf of the Township Whitewater Region and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Amen Hwan Mini or Agonquin people. We thank the Amen Hwan Mini people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of indigenous people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our adoption of the agenda. The recommendation is that the council of Township Whitewater Region approve the December 4th, 2024 agenda. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Trim. Is there any amendments or changes you'd like to propose? Councillor Moore?
I have one. We just received a letter from the Pembroke Airport Commission, and they're looking for to send off a signed letter on behalf of this council to Airport Management Council of Ontario. And we're looking for with other small municipal airports to rely on the government or hopefully push the government to give us more funding or some funding. And that's what the letter of intent is for you to sign with participation from other municipalities.
Perfect. So you're proposing that we add it in to correspondence, requiring direction?
Could it please be added?
Excellent. So do I need to do a separate vote, or can I add that in?
With two-thirds.
Okay. So is there any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, then assuming we receive two-thirds vote, we will insert councillor Moore's item under correspondence as requiring direction, and then I'll get councillor Moore to speak to it at that time. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the agenda as amended. And it carries. Thank you. Good. Next is the adoption of minutes. So there are two minutes, sets of minutes that we're adopting. The first is this November 14th closed session, for which myself and councillor Olmstead weren't here, and regular session from December 20th. The recommendation is that the council of Township Whitewater Region approve the closed session of November 14th, 2024, understanding that they remain confidential, and the regular session of November 20th, 2024. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Tabbert. Is there any errors or omissions noted in any of either sets of those minutes? Okay, seeing none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. Good. And then I'll just note that we have one set of committee and board minutes that have been attached to the agenda for your review as well as the public's. That is the Muskrat Watershed minutes from October 17th, 2024. And I'll just offer the council lead for Muskrat Watershed if there's anything she wants to share.
No, there's nothing major on here, but just to let you know that there is no meeting in December.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Tabbert. Next item on the agenda is disclosures of interest. Is there anybody who needs to make a disclosure based on any other item on the agenda today? Good. And I see none. Next are presentations and delegations. And we have one scheduled for today, clerk? Jesse Gringon, is that right Jesse? Have I got that right? So I'll get Mr. Gringon to come to the mic, turn it on, and... Perfect. So just to... And I know the clerk has already talked to you about it before, but for anybody in the public that's watching, the delegation is an opportunity for any member of the public, any resident from Whitewater Region to have an opportunity to present to council. They have an allocation of 10 minutes, and after that, council have the opportunity to ask questions or make comments based on that presentation. Excellent. Mr. Gringon, you ready?
Yep.
Floor is yours.
Good morning, council. Afternoon. I'm here today to tell you my story of what happened to me this fall. My name is Jesse Gringon, and I live at 21 Little Street. I bought here five years ago. I live in a century home, and my yard is fully fenced with an eight-foot pressure-treated fence that was there when I purchased the property. It is an R1 partially serviced lot. On the past long weekend of August, I could hear my neighbor building something at their location on their property. That wasn't unusual because they have been operating a woodworking business at that location for years. On the holiday Monday, I could see that they were building a very large building with a roof line and eaves mere inches from my fence. I included the picture, seven and a half inches from my fence. I immediately knew that this would not meet local bylaws. A quick search confirmed my suspicions. I read that we are both R1, and the building needed to be 2.5 meters from the sideline property. This is an accessory building, but we are not talking about a Home Depot garden shed. We're talking about a 30-foot-long garage. I'm not sure at what point an accessory building is required to meet the Ontario Building Code and Fire Code, but I would assume that any building of that size would need a variance if it didn't meet the 2.5-meter setback. On the Tuesday after the long weekend, I contacted Whitewater to express my concerns about the garage and the fully-registered woodworking business that was being operated in this location. To be blunt and honest, I feel from the first call to today, I have not been treated ethically or fairly. I have been misled many times, including my ability to speak to council since August. I did nothing wrong, but I feel like I am being treated as if I did something wrong. I reported a situation where my property was being damaged, and I looked to Whitewater to enforce the bylaws. It turns out, my neighbor had built the structure without applying for or receiving a building permit. At this point, it was still just open rafters and no sheathing. I requested a stop-work permit, and at this point, sorry, to prevent further work until it was resolved. That did not happen. I was told it cost money to the township for a stop-work order, and work continued. This building is so close to my fence that when they were working on the roof and stuff rolled off, it landed into my yard. When I say close, it was less than a foot from my fence. I continued with numerous phone calls and emails. I noticed a strong aversion from emails and the use of phone... from emails and the use of phone calls. I'm okay with phone calls, but details should be confirmed in an email to keep a paper trail. I found this very frustrating. Senior management assured me that this would be dealt with when the neighbor got a building permit. I was specifically told it would be 2.5 meters in one phone conversation. And the neighbor was told by staff and agreed that the building and its roof was to be 2.5 meters from the property line. Ombudsman has confirmed, and staff admitted that this message was relayed between Whitewater staff, the neighbor, and myself. I was assured that if I would have been in contact with the ombudsman in August, they would have been able to help me out in getting the 2.5-meter setback. But I didn't feel the need to contact them at this time because I was assured by the staff that it would be held to the 2.5-meter setback. These were the last measurements given to me before the garage was completed in November. And sadly, these measurements weren't even close to what is approved now. This garage is also built without getting a survey and without the use of a transit, and sits crooked on the property, measuring two different distances from my property line. There has been many things screwed to the fence during this process, including gates that attach to my fence and the garage, and the garage, lights, string lines, and it is used to pile construction garbage on. I am sure if you had a neighbor pouring water onto your house, fence, yard, or septic field, you would not be accepting of that. Just suck it up. You may think it's a fence, and it gets wet anyways. I do understand that. But the building... But up until the 30-foot building was constructed, it did see sunshine and airflow and was able to dry. Since this building has been constructed and has been limited to the proper ventilation and sunshine and remains wet longer than the rest of my fence. I was never afforded the courtesy of an onsite meeting with any staff or council to see my concerns. I was constantly bypassed. I've had to spend countless hours this fall trying to get this resolved without any success. I've read the whole bylaw myself, and I've contacted a lawyer to read the litigation back to me and fully understand what it says. I have asked... As of now, the neighbor has moved the wall and its roof line a few inches over onto their property, meeting the bare minimum bylaw requirements. 39 inches for the building, 18 inches for the eaves trough. There is a wooden build-out to hold lumber attached to the garage. It is 18 inches from my fence, and it is piled with lumber from floor to ceiling. When I saw that this was transpiring, I again tried to communicate with Whitewater as what I was seeing in no way resolves the issue of property damage due to new construction. Again, my concerns were not considered and 100% ignored. This was preventable. My fence was pre-existing. If a building permit was approved, why were they allowed to leave the roof draining onto my physical property and septic field? Both the fence and septic field were pre-existing, but it appears not considered. Was that information included in the building permit application? I thought the bylaws were here to protect the residents of Whitewater. Every single time I had called or emailed, I was given misinformation, and no one could inform me a straight and solid answer to the proper terminology or the bylaw requirements of the building being built until mid-November, when the building was already built. I kept getting, "We will look into it. We will have to review the bylaw," which never happened until November, or completely ignored me altogether. It took over a week to get the first response over the matter, which was an unprofessional email with zero punctuation or regards to helping me, and continued to be ignored until mid-October, when I contacted a different Whitewater employee. My opinion is that you worked with my neighbor to maybe find a loophole for them in my peril, my costs, and outgoing perpetual damage to my property. This may be a clever loophole, but it definitely does not meet the 2.5-meter setback. In the past, I called Whitewater about the noise from the neighbor operating a lumber planer through his business. I was ignored at that time, too, and was told that there is no noise bylaw. But if the bylaw would have even have spent a minute investigating instead of automatically ignoring it, they would have seen that the noise was being caused by an illegal woodworking business operating in an R1 zone. They had business signage with posted hours of operation and an online business profile for this address. The reason I bring this up is that we have a repeat offender ignoring bylaws for building permit zoning infractions, drainage, non-compliance, and illegal business requirements. And you guys seem to be giving him a break at the mercy of my well-being. The old adage, "Just go ahead and do it and ask for forgiveness later." In closing, I have a few requests. I am requesting in written from the fire chief that this structure meets all requirements of the Ontario Building Code and Fire Code, code for storage of flammables and the source of heat in this garage. Second, I ask for training and revision into the staff enforcing the bylaws within the township. The township should be able to provide prompt and sure answers pertaining to the matters. That should be black and white, and residents shouldn't have to wait three months for a proper response. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that presentation. At this point, I'll open it up to the floor to see if there's any comments or questions from members of council. Councillor Olmstead?
Yeah, thank you. Just wondering, I did see some notes in the presentation. What address are we dealing with here? I didn't see an exact address. I saw Little Street, but I didn't see it.
My address is 21, it's probably 17 or 21.
So yours is 21?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll just get you to keep your mic on, just so it gets recorded. Yeah, it's good. It's on?
Yeah, I asked him to shut it off when he's not using it because you get...
Oh, okay. Good. If you respond, just please turn it on. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else councillor Olmstead? Good. Any other members of council, any questions or comments? Councillor Trim?
Yes, I can... I can understand your frustration, and I would certainly be interested in getting a report from staff as to what happened from the municipal standpoint, point of view. There's no question that we can always do better, and I thank you for your presentation because maybe there are some weaknesses in our system that can be addressed. And you've left, in your presentation, there are a number of questions unanswered, and I'm hoping that staff would be able to provide those answers to us and to you. And...
That is why I would like answers as to what happened, and why wasn't it held to the 2.5 meters like was stated to me. Like, I was told this in the beginning of October, and then I just got left in the dust.
Well, if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, we certainly don't want other people to experience the frustrations that you have. And it's not common that that happens, and it's unfortunate to happen at all. And so I'm looking forward, hopefully, to a resolution to this and more information for all of us, as we better understand...
I feel like more training for the inspectors. There's another instance, another neighbor down the road, she wanted to build a shed in a pool, and she couldn't get a straight answer as to where can I build my pool and put my shed. She got told, "Well, if you put it here, you might get a letter. You might be able to put it here." Who's going to put out the money for that? It's her, and she's going to get screwed in the end. She asked, she requested for a staff member to come, and she just, again, got ignored. I believe this happens very often, more than you guys are aware of, I believe.
Well, in that case, I would ask this person to contact us. We'll deal with that as a separate issue. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Good. Thank you councillor Trim. Is there any other member of council that has any questions or comments? Yes, councillor Tabbert?
I'm sort of disappointed in hearing what... Sorry, I can't remember your last name. Jesse, anyway. I'm sort of disappointed in what he has said to us. I remember seeing something about this a few months ago, and I let it slide because I figured our staff were looking after it. Do we have anyone here to answer the questions as to what this resident has had to go through and why? Or should we wait for a report from our staff member regarding this? And is our staff member here to answer any of these questions, please?
Good. CAO?
Yeah, so for clarity, myself as the CAO and also serving as a manager of community development, I have been dealing with Josiah throughout some of the process, maybe not at the front end, but not too long after that. For the... I think a report or to provide a coordinated response to what the delegation has brought forward to council, I think perhaps a report mechanism would be the best solution. Noting what the delegation has said, so yeah, I think a report would be the best mechanism to communicate the process back to the members of council. Thanks.
So, Mr. Gringon, the delegation doesn't afford the opportunity for those questions to be asked. You've highlighted in the presentation, there will be an opportunity afterwards to coordinate with staff if there's some subsequent questions, but I have to enforce the delegation rules. Good. Is there any other questions from members of council? Yes, councillor Tabbert?
One more. Is there an illegal woodworking operation going on at this place of business or at this home?
So I could clarify that. It appears, not it appears, rather, there was a business operating out of a detached structure at 23 Little Street. For clarity, it is 23 Little Street. We were made aware of that. I think Josiah had indicated, I think maybe May, but I'll follow up with Josiah on that. But when we were made aware of it in August and into September, the tenant who was operating that business informed us that he would cease the operations of that business. So sometime in September, again, I don't have the timeline in front of me, the operation, the business operation ceased to occur, noting to the members of council that as a residential property, residential owners are allowed to, for their own personal purposes, utilize equipment around woodworking in their sheds. We live in rural Ontario. People have saws in their sheds, and they utilize them, so for clarity for the public watching. But there was marketing online for the business, and that ceased, at least when we verified that after our meeting. And the proponent did indicate to us in an email that he would cease operations immediately. Thanks.
How is it going to be enforced?
So again, I get you to hold your questions, but you'll have an opportunity to bring them up afterwards. Good. Councillor Olmstead?
With respect to building bylaws, I know there's a difference in measurements on each side of the property. I know one side is, on at least a town property, I think it's around three meters, and the other side of the property has to be one meter or whatever it is. I'm not exactly sure what... Can somebody provide some clarity to that?
I'm going to get the CAO to respond to that.
Yeah, so the... I won't go into the detail on the specific property. I'd rather, you know, highlight that in some type of memo to council or report. Commonly, there is a minimum side yard setback for the dwelling or the primary use. And then there's another setback for accessory structures. So an example would be, you take on a farm property, the dwelling on the farm could be set back at a certain distance, but the barn that holds livestock would be a separate distance than the dwelling. The storage structure with tractors would have a separate distance than the dwelling as well. So there's differences between the primary and incidental or secondary uses, but we could summarize that in the particular instance. Thanks.
Good. And I'll just add, based on some of the input provided during the delegation, is that eaves are another component of that. Distance from both ends of the building, as was briefed to us here in the delegation, the building may not be square to the property line, so it may have different distances based on different ends. So those aspects, I'd ask staff to include all of that in the report so we can see that all at once. Is that fair councillor Olmstead? That helps you answer your question. Is there any other questions or comments from members of council? Okay. So at this point in time, I just, and not only for Mr. Gringon, sorry if I'm butchering that, but Gringon, close, and to anybody else that has complaints about the level of service that they're being provided, there are mechanisms by which a complaint can be submitted, which would launch an investigation. So that policy is available, and I believe it has been provided to Mr. Gringon as an option. And now that would be a personal complaint versus this report, which will come back to council and to be discussed at council. And just to confirm, you have received the documents about that complaint process?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Good. Any final comments from any member of council? Good. And staff, you're good? It's clear?
Yep, certainly. It's clear. Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Good. Councillor Trim?
The report that we're going to receive, would that be available? I know it'd be public knowledge, but that be available to Mr. Gringon?
Yes. Okay. Yes. And I'm going to ask that a report be sent up through you as the lead for building and economic development.
Yeah, and that's the one area that I was considering. And we will, at the discretion of council, provide you with a report with public information. I see no issue with that. Any information that is confidential will be presented to the members of council in a closed-session meeting. So just recognizing that there are some limits around information that we could share. So when the time, when the report is prepared in January or early February, we will be cognizant as staff and the corporation that we will present information as public. Thanks.
Perfect. Good. Thank you for taking the time to come today and present to council. And I'd encourage you again to take a look at that complaint policy and provide your personal circumstances in something in writing so that it can also be addressed. Good. That's it. That's it. Thank you so much. Excellent.
If I could just, if I could just ask the clerk, there were photos that were distributed to members of council. Do we have copies of them? Because they probably should be part of the public record, seeing as the members of council have viewed them.
Yes. Good catch, CAO, so.
I will speak with Jesse here right now. Thanks.
Good. So just to note, the stuff, the handout and the pictures that were distributed to council will remain in the clerk so that they can become a part of the public record. So if you need those pictures back, we'll have to make arrangements with the clerk to get them photocopied. Excellent. Perfect. While it will be public record, so done. Excellent. You're good? Clerk, you're happy?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Excellent. Next item on the agenda. Sorry, I'll just confirm, there are no further delegations or presentations.
Correct, none.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is our mayor's address, and to our full house today. I will provide you. And I'll just reiterate again for those people that might be watching, the purpose of the mayor's address is not an opportunity for me to do a speech, but for me to report back to council and the public as to what I've done on your behalf since our last meeting. So there is some accountability. Good. Since our last council meeting on November 20th, I attended 10 meetings and events on behalf of council. As the county councillor, I attended a regular council meeting as well as a public health unit board meeting. I'll just share some highlights to a couple of the meetings that I attended. 23rd of November, I attended the Whitewater Growers' 65th anniversary dinner. An incredible evening. Councilor Tabbert was one of the organizers and also a very good auctioneer. Honoring many of our residents, there was quite a few lifetime achievement awards that were presented, who have contributed to horticulture for many years in our greater community. Incredible to see the enthusiasm to this. What I had failed to do, and I got sidetracked, and I'll ask Councilor Tabbert to do it, is I'd like to connect the president of the Horticultural Society with our manager of community services.
Already done.
Already done?
Yeah.
So that there is a relationship there. I'm very hopeful that we might be able to exploit the Whitewater Growers to help make our main streets beautiful. And I'll lean on Councilor Tabbert. Okay. 28th of November, I met with some provincial reps, this time from the Ministry of Mines, to discuss the Old Haley mine site and its future potential, including whether it might be able to become potential industrial employment lands in the future. Again, another excellent discussion, and there's going to continue to be subsequent meetings on this. Once I have a report, and my plan would be to provide something back to council in January or early February about it, so you'll all have the same information that we're working through at this point in time. Okay? But we're continuing to push that opportunity, and I'm going to lean very heavy on our planner. Good. I received a call from our MPP, John Yakubuski, last week, referenced the increases in the OPP costs and how the province will lessen the impact on municipalities. We're going to discuss this later in the meeting, but I just wanted to highlight that I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Yakubuski. County of Renfrew council presented the Warden Awards for 2024. Mr. Dan Poole, a resident of Whitewater Region, was honored with the 2024 Wardens Community Service Award in the individual category. Mr. Poole has volunteered tirelessly for many years to promote awareness and education about the flows and levels along the Ottawa River watershed, helping Renfrew County residents broaden their knowledge about water management, making timely water management information available to residents in his home municipality of Whitewater Region and to the greater community at large along the entire Ottawa River watershed. He has been passionate advocate for better communication and transparency when it comes to managing water levels along the Ottawa River, and has created the Northern Reservoirs Facebook group in 2020, which provides real-time updates on water conditions and is a testament to his dedication to helping river communities stay informed and prepared. So Mr. Poole has been, and I've had the opportunity to communicate with him a number of times about levels of water and flows in the Ottawa River. He was also appointed to a Pontiac County Committee that worked within the province of Quebec on water level management, and he was a civilian advisor to this. Very well informed, very informative, and was excellent to see him get recognized for his work. So congratulations to Dan. Good. The next point I'll just make is that as a result of our notice of motion that we received last week on the making Watchhorn and Anderson roads more safe, we have received significant, I wouldn't say significant, we received some community feedback. And I just wanted to thank the public for that feedback. That is exactly what we need, exactly what I had hoped for. When I received that feedback, I, just so council's aware, the public's aware, I make sure that the manager of Public Works has it as the lead for the analysis, that's due back to council by the end of March, as well as our council lead for Public Works, including roads, which is Councilor Moore. So I'm busy filling up your mailboxes. Good. And that way, when it comes back to council, all of council will ensure that they've had, seen this public input into that decision. Excellent. Last point is just on behalf of council and staff, I want to extend a warm holiday greeting for this upcoming holiday season. Doesn't feel like Christmas yet, but it's coming, and wish everyone a new year filled with peace and prosperity. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from Whitewater Region. And that ends my mayor's report for today. Is there any questions or comments from members of council? Good. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Clerk?
None received.
Excellent. Sorry, and I failed to say, all of those public comments I receive, I also give to the clerk. So she also has a record of feedback that I've been receiving from the community. Good. Reports. We're going to start with our first one, 9.1, which is a tender for a roll-off trailer. The recommendation is that the council of Township Whitewater Region approve the award of tender 2024-15 to Huckabone's Equipment Limited for the purchase of a 2025 Weberlane WL1678R roll-off trailer and three bins at a cost of $48,839.71, inclusive of non-refundable HST. A mover and a seconder, please. Councilor Moore, Councilor Trim, and I'm handing this over to manager of Public Works.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of the last assets that we put in towards the revised landfill sorting area. If residents and council have been down since 2023, we've done a lot of changes with scales brought in, and also the whole sorting area that was completed in 2023. This is one of the last areas that allows staff to haul the waste bins from the sorting area to the active face. Currently now, we're doing it by a third-party contractor, sorry. And this allows, that it can be done in-house in savings. Additionally, with the activation of these trailer and bins, it allows other departments to have use of a dump trailer or roll-off bin, which can be used. Been a lot of thought with mechanics involved and also with the environmental staff. All the bins will have tarps so they can be used, not just for the landfill, as I said before, it can be used for hauling, depends if it's, you know, for a flood, for example, or for anything that's done through other departments. The township did close the tender, and two bids, sorry, two bids were received, sorry, and there is an error in the report. It was November 28th, not February, I apologize for that. It was open immediately after closing. Staff did analyze the bids, there was one mathematical error in the addition that was corrected. And the staff with the specifications did spec to meet our TCA policy of 20-year life trailer, so we included that the trailer frame be hot-dipped galvanized to extend the life of the trailer. And the 2024 budget did include improvements to the landfill, which included various tasks. The one item that we did include within the budget was new landfill gates. Staff did purchase camera equipment to assist the actual staff to monitor the loads and to see it and make it more faster, so going across scale. So we are trying to make it more efficient for residents, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the mover first, Councilor Moore.
Just glad that this has gotten this far. It's nice to see the improvements at the landfill and certainly making it easier for our workforce out there. So I'm in full agreement. Thank you.
Good. And secondary, Councilor Trim?
Yes, I'm, this is really good news, that a little over two years, the, this equipment will be paid for with our tipping fees. And so I like this kind of an idea. Also, just a question, Mr. Mayor, if I may, will this, one of these bins replace the tandem dump truck that was parked for domestic waste?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you can just put that into your mic, please.
That is correct.
Oh, good. So you used to have a red light here. Perfect. Any other questions from members of council? Yes, Councilor Olmstead.
Thanks, Mayor. So just describe to me what happens with these bins. I thought they were actually taken off-site, but they stay on-site?
That's correct. So the tips, or any smaller use, like smaller, these trailers or something that has come in, has bags of garbage, previous to the sorting area that have come to the active face, so you could drive a small car, especially in the middle of winter or spring, it could be really messy. So now they come to a sorted area, which is, you know, it's a gravel basically off a road, and they can tip off various items, scrap metal to domestic garbage, and then they're hauled, when they're full, and they're hauled to the active face.
Okay. In what, right now, would we be spending on third-party to handle these duties now?
Yeah, it's probably about $24,000 a year.
Okay. Is that in there somewhere? I was reading through it, and I figured it was. I was reading rather than listening. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Tabbert?
Can this trailer be used for anything else besides this, or is it just used for the bins?
Yes, yep. So the township doesn't own a dump trailer, for example. We have flatbed, like, um, ladder trucks, but we don't have actual dump trailer. So parks and rackets, for example, can use it for brush material or for anything that can be used.
So I'm going to go Councilor Trim, then Councilor Olmstead. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, you didn't have any questions before I go second round? Trim, and then Olmstead.
Mr. Mayor, through to the manager, it just occurred to me that maybe in the future, bins like this could be placed at the fair sites, for instance. Might be easier to load into them than the big trucks that we use now, and they could just be parked there and picked up when they're full. And so I'm wondering if that is perhaps a thought for the future.
Yeah, that's a very good idea. We will continue in the future.
And Councilor Olmstead?
Yeah, thank you. Along the same lines, I see it has floating or flat deck capabilities as well. How many floats do we currently operate, Councilor, now, of this, of the smaller size, obviously?
Yeah, so we have one larger float, and then we have one that we purchased this year that we use for hauling, primarily hauling our sidebar tractor. But also, part of the system, you can actually buy a flatbed trailer.
I would, I think maybe it's in future use, or I would recommend looking into that capability as well. Never enough equipment, it seems.
Good. No other questions? Okay, I'm just going to throw a couple. Can you confirm, I just noticed a discrepancy in the two bids that were received, significant difference in terms of the value. Can we just confirm, did we try canoe? Was there anything available through AMO in terms of standing offers?
That's correct, yeah. So why it took a lot of time, we actually investigated multiple options, like an actual roll-off truck, roll-off trailer, we, there's two trailer manufacturers out of the States that are part of the canoe program. We carried with them, and we decided that the best option would go to tender on this one. Yeah.
Excellent. And the next one, to the treasurer on it. So I noticed, and Councilor Olmstead highlighted it, the $24,000 in savings in operating from this capital purchase. Have we incorporated that $24,000 savings into the budget already, or are we talking about a new $24,000 that we are going to save?
Yeah, so it's already been incorporated, because it was proposed to be purchased in this year, and we knew going forward for the new year that it would not be included. The cost itself just has been occurring just this year and won't be a carry-forward deal.
Good. So it leads into the next, I know we have a plan for fleet lifecycle management, this would then be added to that if it isn't added in already?
That.
That's correct, yes. Perfect. Perfect. And the last comment I'll make is just, yes, I see so many uses for this. I said to the clerk, I said, wow, that could be the float for the Christmas parade. Not the primary use, I do not want to spend tax dollars on that, but if it was available. Things like, and the ability to move around and drop loads, this is exactly what we went through in 2019 with sandbag moving. We used the tandem trucks and dumped sand and stuff, but things like that, purposes where we do quick drop-offs and quick pickups with multiple bins like this, it gives us the flexibility to respond more quickly to demands and work or emergencies. So it's, I think it's a very flexible way to approach this, specifically the need at the landfill, but it has secondary and tertiary response capabilities. Good. No other questions from council? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Next item is 9.2, and this is a site plan control approval. The recommendation is that the council of Township Whitewater Region enact a bylaw to authorize the township to enter into a site plan agreement with 9611339 Canada Incorporated, DBA Black Ladder Construction, to permit the redevelopment of 177 Cemetery Road. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councilor Trim, seconded by Councilor Olmstead. Good. And I'll just note, before we get it handed over to staff, that this is in our full industrial park. So over to our planner.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in December of 2023, Stephen Rusden, the owner of the corporation known as 9161139 Canada Inc., doing business as Black Ladder Construction, filed an application for a site plan control approval for the redevelopment of a contractor's yard at 177 Cemetery Road. The proposed development is to erect a new coverall structure for the purposes of cold storage with no plumbing, electrical, or heating. The structure will have an area of 4,000 square feet, and it will be utilized for storage on-site. The proponent has also submitted a stormwater management brief completed by JP 2G Consultants that was in support of this application. The subject lands are, include an already existing storage facility that is just over 6,000 square feet and has a gravel parking lot. The drainage on the site slopes towards, drains towards ditches along Cemetery Road as well as Industrial Park Road. So when considering this application, there's kind of four policy documents, policy and legal documents that were considered, as well as the Ontario Building Code and staff comments. So the PPS emphasizes the importance of fostering strong and competitive and diverse rural economies in Ontario, and the proposed development, it's staff's opinion that the proposed development contributes to the long-term prosperity and sustainability of the township's economy. The official plan designates the area as rural, and it does support the proposed activities, but the official plan also required plan also required the township to undertake a site plan control. The zoning bylaw has the area zoned as general commercial and the proposed development conforms with the uses that are permitted under that, oh, pardon me, general industrial. And the proposed development does conform with these permitted uses, with the permitted uses in the zone as well as all the setbacks. And so, and then the last one was the Ontario Building Code. So originally, the proponent had proposed a large steel structure that was going to have heat and water and electricity based on feedback during the site plan control process. It was noted that a certain, a certain level of fire suppression requirements would be needed and the proponent decided to change the, the design. So we are now with a structure that has no services. So the present application supports two points of the strategic plan. One is to support continued development in the township as well as to support the retention and expansion of existing businesses in the township. So in part of the, the process of reviewing the application, we entered into an engagement process. The application was circled, circulated to the relevant agencies in accordance with the Planning Act and township staff were also circulated the application, which resulted in several comments regarding access, grading, drainage, fire safety, utilities and waste management. I've already mentioned the main point about the fire suppression, but all other comments were also addressed by the proponent. In terms of financial implications for the township, once the permit is issued, the, the property will be reassessed by MPAC and this may result in a higher tax revenue for the township. And that basically concludes my report with my next steps being that, that council approve the, the bylaw and that we execute the site plan agreement and register it to the property.
Excellent. Thank you, Planner. And I'll go to the mover first, Councilor Trim.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor, a comment. As the, the planner, Alex, indicated, this application evolved over time and the applicant has shared with me that he's very pleased that, with the, the help that the, both the building and the planning department gave him going through this process. For him, at times it was frustrating, but working with the, with staff here, it turned out to be a good experience for him. And I just want the council and staff to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Olmstead?
Uh, no questions. I support the recommendation. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of council? I have to highlight one thing, and I know it's addressed, but I just want to publicly acknowledge it. And that is the, the drainage, the surface water. Cemetery Road is in the ditching along Cemetery Road and how this surface water may feed into that is a concern, but I believe staff have already addressed that. Cemetery Road is in our budget and is confirmed as being part of the Wrenchen Valley's budget at the same time. So the likelihood of that also being completed in the coming year will support this new development. And I just look, manager of Public Works can confirm that?
That's correct.
Excellent. Good. No other comments or questions? Excellent. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Good. Next item, 9.3, which is the Ontario Clean Water Agency Service Agreement for 2025 and 2026. The recommendation is that the council of the Township of Whitewater Region, one, approve entering a new two-year fixed-priced agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, and two, direct staff to move forward with a request for proposal for operations for the township's water and wastewater system in, in 2025. I just amended that. In 2025. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councilor Moore, seconded by Councilor Trim. Manager of Public Works?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be, just sorry, since 2023, which when, when Aqua took over the, the water and wastewater for the, for the township, there have been three renewals and then with a lot of extension, we're placed to the end of this year. Aqua has been a, a big partner over the last, over the last decade, assisting in, um, many projects. One of the biggest projects, they assist in the, in the, the design and the construction of the wastewater plant. There is two types of, types of contracts that Aqua provides. It's a fixed price contract and also a cost plus contract. Up to this date, the contract has been a cost plus one project. So basically, the, the, the two differences in a cost plus, which we were on, Aqua would, would estimate the, the operating expenses. And then, then they would, they would reconcile it at the end of the year. Based on the last few trends, it's in a report that staff feel that, that they're recommending to go to a, to a fixed price contract. It was the same price proposed by Aqua. So it'll be a set price for the year. Other than Aqua has brought in was the, the last since COVID, a lot of the chemical pricing is very variable. So that is one item that would be, that would be, it would be determined at the end of the year. What was the budget and what was the actual would be, would be reconciled at the end of the year. Both, uh, both, both the types of, of contracts are, they both have the benefits. Typically, when a new, like, a brand new contract was put in place, Aqua suggests to have a cost plus. Then any new plants as, as the wastewater plant. And that's why we, staff have been recommending just to carry on was the, the, the extension. But in this one, Aqua did, did recommend that we were into a new, to a brand new contract, which, which is, and, and originally, and, and their first, first proposal was a five-year contract plus five years' extension. Staff have been negotiating over the summer months and we're down and we're down to, uh, a two-year contract to allow for, for, to future bids coming in. So staff are recommending part of the, that was one of the recommendations, part of the, that the, the water and wastewater task force was to go in actually to, to, to gain proposals. So staff are recommending that, that we go up with a RFP in 2025 with, and then closing, and we close it in the fall to winter of 2025. Um, one of the good news stories that staff, count, sorry, staff were able to lower the, the management fees. It was previous years at fifth, the last contract at 15% of, of the, of the management fee from the, and Aqua, through the multiple negotiations, wanted 17.76%. Staff did it down to 15, so, which is savings of almost 20, almost $24,000. Staff are, are recommending not changing the rates in the budget, but that, that additional saving would be transferred to, to reserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mover? Thank you. Mover, Councilor Moore, questions, comments?
I'm in favor of both items. Item number one and item number two. In the future, if we do vote RFP, it would be nice to see what comes back and how things have changed over the years since we last RFP'd or did something to look for quotes. So I know it's been some time, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Secondary, Councilor Trim?
Yes, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I would like to compliment staff and leadership of the manager for their negotiating skills. That is quite impressive. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we need to recognize that. Every effort to save every dollar. Good. Just pause for a moment on our questions here. And I just want to recognize, Councilor Bell joined us. I just need to confirm if you have anything to declare for any of the remaining items on the agenda. Okay, no need to declare. Excellent. And any other questions on this item from members of council? Councilor Olmstead?
Yeah, just a comment. I agree with both recommendations, one and two. And just to note that it really does align with the recommendations from the Whitewater Region Waste, sorry, I screwed that up. Water and Wastewater Task Force, which is in Whitewater, it, it aligns with the proposals, the 40-some recommendations that we made as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll just make one comment to thank Aqua. By no means are we suggesting that they aren't doing a good job. They are. But we have a, we have a due diligence, a financial responsibility to make sure that we are always doing things as economically as possible to the highest level. So this process will allow for that. And when it comes to that RFP that we'll see in the coming year, I just want to include that we're also going to make a cost estimate bid against that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Perfect. So we'll have a cost comparison between outside bidders as well as if we were to do the business internally. Good. No other questions from council? Yeah, Councilor Bell?
Just had one question about that management fee. It was brought up in a meeting prior. Did they, did Aqua give a reasoning why they've gone from 13.9 down to 11.1 and then they wanted up to 17%? Was there reasoning why that's been going up significantly over the last five, six years?
Oh, yeah. Originally, it started off, provided me that the mandate was 15%. It did go lower and that big, basically went down to 11%. That was with the, the new plant came online. And then the last, last 24, 25, one of the extensions was to bring it back to line it to, to 15%. A lot of theirs, it, it, their overhead's gone up, that's on management fee. And also in salaries, one of the big jumps in, in, in the operating was salaries. Their staff has just, what, the, the union ratified wages increased. One thing I know that Aqua did, it was, it was completed in 2024, but it was backdated for two years. So I think it was 2022 and 2023 and 24, which, which, which didn't go back and, and charge us extra for the previous years, just for the 24 additional. So we will see a larger, uh, reconcile for that, for that, for the, the, the increased wages. The one thing, yeah, they're basically, Aqua, to answer your question, sorry, more for, for their overhead, where they've increased from, from 15%. Aqua is a, a crown corporation, but with, they found out with, with post-COVID that their pricing has gone up.
Good. Any follow-on, Councilor Bell?
So the management fee, so you spoke to the operating costs, but the management fee is on top of their operating, correct? So what's included in the management fee specifically? I'm just wondering if this is something that's going to continue year after year with ongoing contracts? Are they going to keep coming back with an extra 2% every year up to 25%, 30%? Or is, is 15% kind of the standard across most of these corporations that take care of this?
Yeah. So that's one advantage, sorry. And part of the going to a fixed, it just goes up by, by, um, CPI, sorry, or, or, or minimum 2%. So what's the flexibility? One thing staff come back is actually come, like, the, the best longevity is have a, like a longer-term contract. So you'd flatline out the, you don't know for the cost going, you know, five, between five and 10 years out. But with, with the commitment for the task force is, is to have a two-year, that way it allows us to go out for a request proposal. Part of the management fee, it's all, all the overhead. It's like, it's not, not the, the, the local staff, we have operators, but it's all their bosses and, and also fees as in their, in their software programs and, and insurance and liability.
Ail, please.
Yeah, just because we're looking at this table here, the management fee is a ratio of total cost in the calculations here. So you'll see that it's going down as the cost increase, right? So the 11.1% is only a ratio of total cost. So while the management fee projected in the budget might have been greater, in the end, it only costs 11%. Or it was only representative of 11%. So for clarity. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Good. 9.4 is a draft sewer use bylaw. Recommendation is the council of Township Whitewater Region receive the draft sewer use bylaw to regulate the control of waste discharges to municipal sewers and sewage works for information, for information and feedback purposes. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councilor Moore, seconded by Councilor Olmstead. Back to Manager of Public Works.
Sorry, I'll pass it to, um, I'm Dan Nicholson. She's on Zoom today, sorry.
Hi, everybody's seen?
Perfect. Yes, we got you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so the Township Sewer Use Bylaw was last updated in 2013. And there have been some significant changes to Cobden Stormwater and Wastewater Treatment Systems since the bylaw was last updated. And the current bylaw does not provide controls that are required to protect our valuable wastewater assets. So this new proposed bylaw attached to my presentation provides detailed direction to the public as well as businesses and industry regarding appropriate sewer uses and allowable discharge limits. So the proposed bylaw is intended to provide clear limits that serve to protect the township's valuable assets and, including the recently upgraded wastewater treatment plant and the associated sanitary sewer collection system as well as a stormwater collection system. Um, so the current bylaw, the current bylaw as it is currently written, regulates the use of public sewage works and it really only focuses on the requirements for building owners requiring them to actually connect to the sanitary system and storm sewers, when and where they become available. With the exception of a prohibition on discharging stormwater to the sanitary sewer, the current bylaw does not establish any limits on what kind of things can be discharged to our sanitary and storm sewers. And this actually leaves both the collection system, the pipes in the ground, as well as the Cobden wastewater treatment plant, and in, in the end, the Cobden Marsh and Muskrat Lake at risk for significant damage or environmental harm. So in 2021, as everybody's aware, the Cobden wastewater treatment plant underwent significant upgrades. And these upgrades came along with a new ECA requirements that were established by the Ministry of Environment. So previously, the former wastewater treatment plant often exceeded the regulatory limits for effluent quality. And then with the upgraded plant, the Ministry of Environment required that, that the new plant meet much more stringent effluent quality limits. For example, the former plant had a total phosphorus effluent limit of one milligram per liter, which it still often exceeded. And the new plant has a required regulatory ECA limit of 0.1 milligrams per liter. And it actually also has a design objective of 0.05 milligrams per liter. So the new plant is, has a 20 times more stringent requirements set on it than the former plant did. So presently, the wastewater treatment plant is operating within those new ECA requirements. However, in order for the upgraded plant to continue to meet those new effluent requirements, we need to ensure that the wastewater that is directed to it does not exceed certain conditions for what it was not designed. conditions for what it was not designed. Wastewater that contains contaminants in excess of what the plant is designed for can lead to damage of key equipment such as pumps and other things such as the filtration membranes within the plant. So this bylaw will establish limits, such as acceptable pH ranges, temperature, and concentration limits for various chemical parameters that must be met in order for the wastewater treatment plant to be able to continue to operate as designed. So for as, and for as long as we have it, hopefully that it has been designed to be able to operate for. So this will include provisions to restrict other problematic items from being discharged into our sanitary sewers and storm sewers, such as baby wipes, chlorinated pool water, and dental amalgam waste. Items such as baby wipes, I'm sure you're aware, they don't break down the same way that, what the sewers were traditionally designed for, the three Ps, pee, poop, and paper, and things like baby wipes can cause significant damage to things like pump stations. So we want to limit those items from getting into our, into our system. So, so this bylaw will allow the township to be able to ensure that our collection system is protected and that the wastewater treatment plant can continue to operate effectively for many years to come. So the wastewater task force included in their recommendations, item number two point nine in its list, that the township should include a wastewater effluent quality limits in a water wastewater bylaw to ensure the continued and uninterrupted operation of the Cobden wastewater treatment plant. And so this bylaw implementation goes directly towards the tasks for, the task force, one of their key recommendations. There are some financial implications that are, should be communicated. There are no initial costs associated with implementing of a sewer use bylaw. It is anticipated that implementation of this bylaw will reduce costs borne by the general system over time, as is expected to result in reduction of maintenance and repair costs to things such as flushing or water, or sewer line breaks. As well, it's expected that this would reduce the chemical and energy costs associated with the treatment, running of the treatment plant. Most importantly, requiring that all wastewater meets established limits will prolong the expectancy, the life expectancy of the membrane filters at the Cobden wastewater treatment plant. The membrane filter cassettes have an anticipated, an anticipated life expectancy, and that life expectancy is directly related to the quality and quantity of wastewater that passes through them. These cassettes have an anticipated replacement cost in excess of six to, six to seven hundred thousand dollars. So each year that these membrane, this membrane life is extended, will defer the significant replacement costs for those items. This bylaw also has potential to generate some revenue through sewage discharge agreements, although this revenue would only be collected simply to cover offset energy costs, wear and tear and chemical costs associated with heavier users of the system. There could be enforcement bylaw costs if, if enforcement was ever required, as well there could be costs associated with installing instrumentation and sample analysis. At present, staff are working with businesses to continue to ensure that discharged waste to sanitary sewer is within the operating specifications of the new wastewater treatment plant, including the limits set out in this proposed bylaw. As part of this continued and ongoing evaluation, businesses may be expected to incur costs to either change their processes or identify alternate methods to dispose of their wastes. And staff are making a priority to work with these businesses to help them bring their wastewater effluent into compliance with the proposed bylaw. So our next steps in this process are that this has been presented in draft format to allow members of council, as well as local and commercial businesses, and the public to provide comment before it's finalized. So staff will be circulating this document to all of the larger commercial businesses within the village of Cobden, and we will make it available on the website. And staff plan to return in February to council with a report on any comments that were received, and with a finalized version of the bylaw for adoption. And that's everything, are there any questions?
Awesome, thank you very much. Councilor Moore?
I do, I have, in fact, I have nine questions, but only three I'm going to bring up at this committee, and the rest then I can discuss with Deanne via phone or Zoom. Number one is, how will this affect or effect bylaw enforcement, meaning cost-wise, when things have to be investigated or brought up to code? And two, will there be any grandfathering of whether it be residential sump pumps or whatever going into the system, and how that will be, what effect or affect that will have on our residents? And again, it will result in possibly bylaw within, or Aqua investigating, so they're the two major questions I have on this, just, I don't know, the, with the next report coming back in February, will this be coming into play in next council term, or will be at the next council term after that, or what is the timeframe for all of this? Thank you.
So I'm gonna note the three questions? And I'll offer staff the opportunity that if we, if we don't have a response at this point, you can bring that forward in the subsequent report in February, but we note the three questions from Councilor Moore. So over to you Superintendent Nicholson, is there anything you want to respond to at this point in time?
Yeah, I think I'll reserve my opportunity to comment on, in the final report, but that being said, these are the type of questions that we would like to hear from council and the public over the next month or two while we finalize the bylaw. Essentially, the one point I wanted to make, the, the initial, the initial point of this bylaw is to use this as a communication tool, is to let businesses and residents know how their discharges impact the sewer, or how they can impact the sewer, and what limits they need to be looking towards to help ensure that the, that the infrastructure continues to operate as we, as we would like it to. The, the bylaw enforcement side of things, I think that's something to be discussed by council and to get an understanding of how, how you'd want to implement that in the future. So yes, I think that's something to be discussed over the next coming months.
Good, Councilor Moore, I know you said you had nine, is there anything else you want to highlight publicly?
No, I'm sure the rest is probably just a little bit of housekeeping, so that'll be fine.
Good, so I would just encourage the connection, like you said, and, and then hopefully we can see if there's any councilor comment to that in the final report to any of your nine questions, we'll have the opportunity to see and hear them at that time. Fair? Good. Councilor Olmsted, seconder.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, as the superintendent said, this was one of the main recommendations from the task force, so obviously I agree with the recommendation. I think it kind of follows the three-pronged approach that we had thought was, one, communicate with the users, and secondly, educate the users. I think this bylaw will go a long way to that, along with the mail-out that was just sent out with the last, I think the mail-out's already gone, right? Yeah. I think that, that went along, I'd heard from some of the community that had no idea of some of the information that was on there, so that was really well-received. So I think communicate, educate, and then lastly, as Councilor Moore suggested, the enforcement part, hoping that if the first two are really well-done, there would be very minimal need to enforce much, much of the bylaw. So I think this is a great first step in, in, in creating a, a sewer use bylaw. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Trimp?
Yes, the manager mentioned working closely with, with businesses and residents, and I'm sure included in that would be contractors that are working on new developments for our community.
She's taking a note, so I'm assuming.
Yes, for sure, and I know that I can speak to one of the key aspects of this, is ensure that our system remains in compliance with the new CLI, linear infrastructure ECA that is coming from the Ministry of Environment, that's one of, another piece that brings this bylaw in, and I know we've already been working with some of the developers, including Language, that's giving them the heads up that those sort of requirements are coming down the loop, so yes, and ensuring that, that this is communicated back to them is, is, is key as well.
Anything else from any other member of council? Councilor Bell?
Are there any businesses specifically locally in Cobden that are going to be affected more than others? I know we've talked about the brewery in the past with some of the discharge while they're brewing, brewing, but is this bylaw going to create a significant barrier for any businesses that you know of right now to continue to operate?
Aside from the one previously mentioned, I'm, I can't say for certain, we don't have, we haven't done a lot of investigations into if there are many others that have been in contravention of the proposed limits. I mean, there, as I mentioned in the report, that we'll be just providing this to the commercial business and industrial businesses, because, I mean, if you're a business that's discharging a waste product to the sewer, that's not, as I mentioned, the three Ps, it's something that you would want to be considering, that your business might be having an impact on the sanitary sewer that's, maybe you didn't understand was that that was occurring, so really, the intention of this is to give all businesses an opportunity to look at their, their effluent, consider what the limits are being, being shown, and then bring themselves in a line, so I, while I can't specify that there are anything specifically, even something simple as a restaurant operating a grease trap, or not, or not having a grease trap would be something that they would want to consider. So if you're flushing something down the sink or the toilet that's not pee, poo, or paper, this, you should be considering the impacts and how this bylaw fits in for you, for your business.
And they'll have that opportunity, this draft bylaw is going to be distributed to them, they'll be encouraged to look at it, and then we'll have more, I'm sure we'll get feedback for them that are, that are impacted. Any other questions from council? Good, I just have one. Can you compare the standards that you're including in this draft bylaw? Are they in line with what most operations of similar size, shape, community that, that a business might see in another community?
Yeah, so this bylaw was drafted based on the Canadian Council of Ministers of Environment, CCME, sewer use bylaw, document that they provided, and that, that study looked at all of the bylaws that they were able to identify across Canada, and, and looked at the most common sewer settings for concentrations for pH, temperature, and those sorts of things, and, and, and the drafted bylaw, the, the recommended numbers are based on what many municipalities across Canada have already in place, as well, this bylaw takes into consideration our very specific plant that has, and how it was designed. So, but the, the, so basically, the numbers as set are, follow the CCME draft guideline bylaw with the inclusion of a couple minor changes for temperature, as well as the inclusion for sodium, because specifically sodium is one thing that could impact our plant. So yes, this is a, this is common, and there are some municipalities in our general area, Ottawa being one of them, some smaller ones, including our prior, that have this exact bylaw already in place, word for word.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification. So two things, if there's no other questions or comments from council, I'll just, first of all, I just want to reiterate the letter that Councilor Olmsted mentioned, I thought that was an excellent means of communication, I think staff hit that nail right on the head that has gone out to all users on either the water or the sewer system, so thank you, staff, and that is exactly the standard we want to maintain. And then I lost my second. Second point was just, when this comes back in, in February, I just encourage you, between now and then, take the time to go through it, think of the impacts from your own personal experience, highlight those back to Superintendent Nicholson, so that she can have some time to put thoughtful recommendations back to council when it comes back in February. Good, seeing none, I'll just reiterate, all we are doing is voting to receive this information for feedback, for information and feedback purposes. So with that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, and it's carried. Thank you. Good, we'll do one more, and then maybe take a quick break, but nine point five, emergency management annual, annual program review. So the recommendation is the council of Township Whitewater Region receive this report for information purposes as pertains to the annual emergency management review twenty twenty-four, and approve amendments to the emergency response plan and attachments. A mover and a seconder, please. Councilor Tabbert? And Councilor Moore? Good, and this is going to the clerk.
Okay, so every municipality in Ontario submits a compliance package to the Emergency Management Ontario on a yearly basis. Municipalities must provide an ongoing review of the emergency plan to make sure that the level of, essential level of services required under legislation are adhered to. So just for a little understanding, the municipal control group, our emergency control group is responsible for the direction and control of emergency responses, so they're the hands-on group that meet when the emergencies are called. They are appointed by council, and they participate in annual training and annual emergency exercise, which evaluates the municipal's plan. And then the municipal emergency program committee guide and oversee the development and implement of this plan to improve public safety, create disaster-resilient communities in accordance with the Emergency Management Act and its regulations. So on, on September eighteenth and nineteenth, the members of the control group and their alternates participated in a power outage storm tabletop exercise. The main objective of the exercise was to understand the components of the plan, their roles, the notification procedure, and practice preparedness. After the tabletop exercise was done, we all completed a hot wash, and that, and hopefully to address any inconsistencies that we found in the plan. Once those changes were made to the plan, we met with, or the CMC met with the program committees, or Municipal Emergency Program Committee, EMEPC, just to make sure that the plan was consistent and clear and aligned with our organizational needs. We did make a few minor amendments during, that we found necessary during our discussions. These included changing that, the ward system in the first, the map to the areas. We added a new alternate, or the proper address for the alternate EOC, we updated the HIRA, and we also added the community risk assessment. So this is just, after this is done, I will put compliance into EMO, and we'll get a report after that, so if there's any questions.
I will turn it over to our mover, who is also our council lead for emergency response. Councilor Tabbert?
Yes, this was a very good report, it was a very good exercise we went through. It's all new to me, some of this stuff, so it was quite interesting to learn what all's involved in this, so I think it's a great report, and we should be using it. Thank you.
Excellent, and, seconder is Councilor Moore.
Just a thank you to Carmen for putting all the work into that, I know it's a thankless job, one of them things, because up until the two floods, nothing ever happened around here, we, it collected dust, but unfortunately, we've needed it, so it's a good job to keep it up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of council, any comments or questions? Good, thank you clerk, for another year in review. Excellent, and with that, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, and it's carried, thank you. Excellent, and with that, we'll just take a short And it's carried. Thank you. Excellent. And with that, we'll just take a short five-minute recess and then come back to work. Welcome back to the Township Whitewater Region's Regular Council Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th. We're going to call ourselves back to order at 2:33 PM. And we left off at 9.5 and we will now start at 9.6, which is a bylaw enforcement services agreement. The recommendation is that the council of the Township Whitewater Region approve entering into a three-year agreement with municipal law enforcement services for continued law enforcement services. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Tabbert, seconded by Counselor Olmstead. And this is going to the clerk.
So, okay, the township currently uses M, Municipal Law Enforcement Services, MLES, for our bylaw enforcement. The current agreement allows for 10 hours a week to address community complaints and investigations. They focus mostly on property standards, clean yards and zoning bylaw infractions. However, because of increased demands for services, a new agreement has been reached. The new agreement proposes an hourly rate of $32 and allocating 15 hours a week for their services. The agreement is set for a three-year term with the option to extend, extend the agreement annually. This enables both parties to review their services pre, I can't say that word, once in a while, and then align with, that makes sure it aligns with the municipal needs. The additional increase of services will equate to approximately, I guess this isn't the addition story. So for 2025, if with the 32 hours a week, 32 hours, 15 hours a week, sorry, $32, 15 hours a week is $23,760. So that's up from this year's amount at 16.8. The new agreement will see increased hours from 10 to 15. They will include compliance monitoring, although short-term accommodation fractions cannot be enforced due to the absence of a specific bylaw, complaints related to these issues and all other complaints will be logged using the Access E11 system. And they will provide 24/7, 24/7 phone coverage with calls being prioritized based on urgency. The, the proposed agreement addresses council's commitment to improve bylaw enforcement. By expanding weekly service hours and leveraging tools like Access E11, the township, township can track and resolve complaints while providing a database for future regulatory measures. If there's any questions?
Thank you, clerk. We'll go to the mover, Counselor Tabbert. Any questions or comments?
No, I'm glad to see that we've expanded the hours. I think that's important. Just have a question here, and I know I've heard of it before, and this township's Access E11 system, how are we informing our ratepayers to use this? Because I sort of found out not long ago that if there's a complaint, that's, they should, I don't even know how to use this yet. But I usually just took it down and I would contact whoever was the staff member involved. So it wouldn't be on, it wouldn't be part of this, to log them on. So how are we informing our residents to, along with calling a counselor, to also call this number, Access E11? I, I don't know.
I think the, so the website, if you, if you have a concern and you go to our website as the first place, there is right on our main page, a portal there where you could submit. You don't realize you're submitting an Access E11 submission, but that's what you're filing. I think our clerk is going to try to pull it up on the screen. We have also advertised in, in the current, the ability to use, to submit feedback via that, that online portal via our website. So for the members of council, at your discretion, you could choose to connect with staff. In some instances, we are logging concerns through Access E11. So if somebody comes to the front counter, has a concern with planning, planners aren't available, they typically log the, the inquiry, the concern through Access E11, which then funnels to the planner. Planner responds, closes the case. So we're tracking it that way. We could do more, like we could log more, but this is the little portal here on our website. You click on the, the one link, it's, I think it just says feedback and inquiries. So you click on that, it brings you to this, and then that feeds into Access E11. So that's how we're, we're sort of tracking it. Yeah, we're not going to get them all, but we're trying to utilize it more and more as a way to track questions and inquiries.
So I see here you have to put in your name, phone number, address and all that. I, I don't know many people who have wanted to do that. So what would be the protocol for myself if someone were to call me and I would say, well, just go on here and fill in the information and you can log a complaint. But if they don't want to leave personal information because they don't want that known, knowing they can go through a counselor, can I log the information on there and whose name do I log it under?
Yeah, so you could certainly through your own name, log it on behalf of a resident if they're concerned. I will note that I don't even think it allows you to submit the complaint without putting your name in. It's a required field and the purpose is that we don't respond to anonymous complaints. So if I get an email, somebody's indicating that, the, the information provided through this portal is all confidential, it's only available to staff and, and the MLES services have access to this. So if you, in a category, click bylaw enforcement, they immediately get an email with your inquiry. Yes.
Interesting. I like the, I like this idea.
And to be honest, some of the members of council are already utilizing the system on behalf of residents. So, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, and I'll just add to Counselor Tabbert, I often have people that say, I don't want to have my name attached to it. So if you go into the E11 system, it probably says Neil Nicholson 283. I'm like one of the frequent complainers. But then I also have people that say, I don't have access to the internet. Can I just relay it to you off the phone? And I fill it in and say, please call this member back. So it's kind of, it's, it's, originally I would send an email or make a phone call. This just makes sure that if I can't find the person, I don't need to follow up, the system will follow up. Sounds good. And then, sorry?
No, if I can just add, this is also a great way for us to actually track information. Like it's, it's all going in here. You have to deal with it. Either, either you read it and say that you've closed it or, and it just gives us that, that, that information so that next year we can say, oh, we got, you know, six calls about Airbnbs, but without this.
Good. So no other questions? Good. I'll go to the secondary, which is Counselor Olmstead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I think the contract provides very good value for the services received without going through the steps of, you know, I think the alternative is really hire somebody and that, that's a very, very expensive proposition and paying one person. I've heard from some members of the township that they would love to see our own bylaw officer. And then when I go through and explain to them what that involves and the cost involves, I think this provides a very, very good alternative. So I very much support this recommendation. Thank you.
Any other members of council? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I too, I support this. I just did have the one question is to, why we would not ever RFP this, just for, for our own information?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, we could certainly examine that in the future. So this is a three-year term. There's a bit of transition with MLES at the present time. So we could evaluate that year over year. If we're feeling that the consultant is not meeting their obligations, we have an easy way to terminate the agreement without any, any, any due cost or anything of that nature. So let's, my recommendation to council is that we evaluate it year over year to see if the services were responding to the inquiries. And if three years brings us into 2028, so maybe at the next members, after the election, we could evaluate that. And if we want to move forward with an RFP, we could do so. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Good. Next item, 9.7, Delegations to the 2025 Roma Conference. The recommendation is that the council of the Whitewater Region, council of the Township of Whitewater Region, receive this report for information purposes relating to delegation requests at the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Roma Conference to be held January 19th to 22nd, 2025. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Bell. And I'll turn it to the CEO.
Thanks so much. So again, another round of delegations at, at the, the annual conferences. So the present report speaks to the Roma Conference to be held in January of, of next year. So the township has made three submissions and we've also partnered with the city of Pembroke on a few others, a couple others. So just highlighting our submissions in partnership with the city of Pembroke and town of Armpryor with the Ministry of Infrastructure. So the first item is the cap on the OCIF funds of 15%. So I found two other municipalities that are also having OCIF increase because they're not quite at their upper, upper limit. So ours is going to increase for the next two or three years. So it's good to partner with other municipalities who are experiencing the same deficit in, in, in those funds so that we could, we could advocate to the province together. Secondly, just support with respect to our grant application. So we applied for two grants, one for the housing enabling water and then the housing enabling core service servicing fund. So just requesting that we get the approval for those grants. And then thirdly, just that the province examines other tools around the operations of water and wastewater. With Aqua is a crown corporation and they do provide, provide a benefit, but perhaps partnering with neighboring or regional municipalities, we could create MSC, so municipal service corporations to find efficiencies. The second one is with Treasury Board Secretariat, again in partnership with the city of Pembroke. Council will be aware that we do have a water ice rescue agreement with the city of Pembroke. So this is kind of fitting with that. So the first one is to highlight that we've applied for a grant under the Emergency Preparedness Grant and that they support our approval. We've applied for a generator in that case, haven't heard back yet. Secondly, to seek out a new sustainable formula-based funding model for emergency management. So as our clerk presented today, we have this whole portfolio on emergency management. We have a CEMC that we, that we utilize to respond to and prepare ourselves for emergencies. There's no true sustainable funding for that. So the province has established regulations. They've established legislations to require us to do things and we're just seeking out a sustainable funding model so that we can continue to invest in that, in that infrastructure. The third one, Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. So the first one is to express some, some, some concern around the regional infrastructure and functionality of the new, the trend, the new system with respect to the, when we move forward with the industrial, commercial and institutional recycling pickup. So we're going to be faced with that in short order as we transition residential. We've kind of have that covered, but one gap there is that institutional, commercial and industrial. The second one is to express concerns about the increasing costs in our applications for our landfill ECA. So we're looking to try to better ourselves, which we're looking to try to expand our landfill. We're looking at mechanisms where we invest in compactors to increase the age of our landfill, but we're faced with increasing application fees to the province to, to try to, try to position ourselves in a, in a more sustainable manner. So speaking to that. And thirdly, in a more sustainable manner. So speaking to that. And thirdly, under the Endangered Species Act, which is governed by the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks, we are dealing with Summerhill Resorts. They are the development proposals at 503 Rafting Road, the former Wilderness Tours facility. They are facing some constraints as it pertains to streamlined approvals from the MECP around the Endangered Species Act. So we want to bring that to the minister's attention or their delegate. And we've, I've confirmed with the representative from Summerhill that he's acceptable that we speak to that with the minister as well. So the two in partnership with the City of Pembroke, one is with the Ministry of Finance, so distribution of the proceeds of land transfer tax. It's a little resolution that's going around the province presently, that we get our fair share of land transfer tax. And then just the affordability as a whole, as it pertains to property taxes. The AMO has issued, and we supported by a resolution, discussions around renegotiating our terms with the Province of Ontario and our transfer payments through the OMPF, Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. So just trying to speak to the minister again on how we should look at that. And then the next one is examining the funding of child welfare agencies and supporting homelessness and mental health. So again, not things that we deal, I guess we do deal with them on a day-to-day basis, but they're not, maybe not observable to a great degree in our community, but it's a regional approach, and we're working with the City of Pembroke and the county on these other two items. So we're looking to attend that. I know there's a few members of council attending, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thanks so much.
Thanks, CAO. I'll start with the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. No, I don't have any questions, just a comment. I just want to say it's an opportunity for us to be able to have our voices heard and to advocate, network, and so it's a great opportunity for us. So definitely support. And for everything that is happening with this delegation coming through here, I just want to say that I think it'll definitely be a benefit to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Bell, as a secondary?
Yeah, no questions, just a comment. I think going through all those delegations, I think they're, they support what we're trying to do here in the township. I think they're very timely, especially the first one that you spoke to with the increased cap of 15%. I think that's, that's very important moving forward if we can kind of have our voices heard on that. But yeah, very, very soothing, all those delegations.
Excellent. Okay, and then I saw Counselor Trim.
Yes, I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, through to the CAO, if this would be an opportunity when we're meeting with the Minister of the Environment to bring up the issue of hay bale plastic wrap, the disposal of it, I think is the concern.
Certainly. So what typically happens here is they accept our submission, our delegation, they give us a time, and then we, they commonly require us to confirm who's attending and the subject matter. So we could add that, I mean, certainly at the discretion of council. Commonly, the mayor speaks and changes my notes anyway, so if you could note that, Mayor Nicholson, and make sure to bring that to the minister's attention. Thanks.
Change is a strong word. I reinforce. Anyway. No, and the briefs that are prepared are excellent, and we have to also remember, they're not just read by the minister. In most cases, we're speaking to the key staff. The minister just happens to be staring at me while I'm talking. Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Trim. Great suggestion. I'm seeing concurrence and nodding, so I think that's fair to have added to the list. Is there any other comments or questions from members of council? Good. Seeing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried. I'll just make one other note, is that we're trying to schedule some other meetings that may not be formal delegations while we're at Roma on various different topics. For those people that have the opportunity to participate, CAO and I will make sure that you have a schedule, and if there's an opportunity for you to participate, we think it's appropriate, we'll make sure that you're also aware of what's also available. Good. Next item on the agenda is 10. This is notices of motions, and I'll just go around the floor if there's any. It's going to come out into correspondence. Yep. Good. Notices of motion. I'm just going to go through. No notices of motion. Okay, I see none. So next, we're into correspondence, and I'm going to insert Counselor Moore's item as our first item. And I just want to confirm, we had a chance to distribute the letter. Everybody has a copy of the letter on your desk. Okay, so this is the letter that I will ask Counselor Moore to speak to, and then he can invite staff to add before, before we make any decisions. Counselor Moore?
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, this came to us at the last minute. That's why it's on the agenda at the last minute, so I haven't had any time to actually make phone calls on this. But what this is for, it's because we are a member of the Pembroke and Area Airport Commission. We are one of the municipalities involved. What the board is trying to do is to try and lobby the government to bring back funding for small municipal airports, which was dropped many years ago. At one time, Pembroke and Area Airport had passenger travel, therefore they were on the government's radar and received money. But once that facility quit having airport transportation from here to there, we were taken off the list. And there's another six area airports around eastern Ontario and southern Ontario that are in the same boat. All the infrastructure is coming to cycle, and it's soon time to start replacing. So this idea of having municipals send off on behalf of the mayor, a letter of support, is to iterate to the government that we are here. We're not going to get quiet, we're going to get louder, and we want money. So hopefully this will keep us on the radar. We don't want to get lost on the radar. Like we've been lost for a few years, and we're finally getting other people in the government agencies to reflect that we exist. And we also have the support of CFB, Petawawa. So that is, since they transitioned to air support at Petawawa, the airport is utilized almost daily. So we don't want to lose that, and the infrastructure of CFB, they don't want to lose it as well. And also, there's other, two other things of most importance is air ambulance, and in the spring and the fall, we have the ministry fighting bushfires and forest fires. So they utilize that airport as well. So it's a vital part of our infrastructure in the county, and we don't want to lose it. So with the support of this council, the mayor will sign the letter and send it off. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for sharing that detail about the correspondence. Would you like to introduce a motion to that effect?
I would like to introduce a motion that we accept the letter as written and for the mayor's signature to send it off.
Yep. If you can read us back what you have, clerk.
That the Township of Whitewater Region support the endorsement for the additional provincial flooding, funding.
Do you need a secondary? I'll just have the clerk finish typing, and then, just because we've done this before and we get caught with, no one knows what the motion is. Nope, I'm going to get you to read it, please, and then we'll get a secondary.
That the council of Township of Whitewater Region support the endorsement for additional funding and direct the mayor, and maybe I should put, okay, so let me try that again. I don't like the way that's worded.
Additional support in future funding. Yep, additional support.
That the council of Township of Whitewater Region support the endorsement letter for additional provincial funding and direct the mayor to sign.
Agreed. Secondary, please. Seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? It's carried. Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Moore, for that and inserting it on the agenda. Good, clerk? Okay, the next item on the requiring direction is the County of Renfrew Road Rationalization Assessment. And the recommendation is that the council of the Township of Whitewater Region direct staff to provide the County of Renfrew with recommendations for criteria regarding the road rationalization policy review. Can I get a mover and a secondary, please? Moved by Counselor Moore, seconded by Counselor Bell. Good. And then I'm going to hand it over to the Manager of Public Works. What I'm just going to reiterate first, for those people that have had a chance to review the, members of the public that have a chance to review this correspondence, it is a consultant study that reviews the rationalization used to study roads within the county. It does include consideration, applying those criteria against all the existing roads, and what that would lead to. Which roads would be recommended to be downloaded to lower tiers? Which roads would be recommended to be uplifted to upper tier? None of that is anything beyond a consultant's application of a formula to the roads. It is not written in stone. That is in fact not the meat of the document. The meat of the document is the criteria, which is specifically what the resolution is asking staff to look at and provide feedback. So we don't need to talk about the threat of downloads or the pleasantry of uploads, because that's really not, at this point, part of the discussion. Good. With that, I'll hand it over to Manager of Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, what this came from is the County of Renfrew's transportation master plan that the township is part of. When it came out of that, the county has a custom road relational assessment, and one of the consultants has provided that they go to the Ontario Good Roads Framework that is, which is provided. And one of them, out of that, what the county didn't ask for, but the consultant noted that there's a lot of county roads that wouldn't meet the score. Wanted to note that the new scoring is less restrictive to upload than what the current one is. I've been working with the county's Public Works Department, sorry, and we are meeting as a group at the, next Thursday with the annual County, County, I ran to Public Works meeting, and it's one of the general items on there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the mover first, Counselor Moore.
Just wondering, after we have all these meetings, is there going to be a report come back, or will this be the end of it?
My understanding, that's part of the county's transportation master plan in the county. If they decide to move with it, then it'd be further meetings at County Council.
Okay, another question, if I may. If they do update their master plan, do we receive a copy of it? Meaning your office?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good. And just to follow up, if, after the meeting on Thursday with the other Public Works managers across the Renfrew County, if there's anything that council needs to endorse, reinforce, or you believe it's necessary, that can be facilitated. I think that's also what you were indicating. So I'll leave that to the Manager of Public Works. After that meeting, you can discuss with the CAO what might need to come back to council. Fair? Good. And the secondary was Counselor Bell? No. Any other comments from members of council? Yes, very interesting if you are an engineer. Yes, there is some great detail in there, and it's interesting, if you get a chance to look at the report, think of it in terms of what Whitewater Region might look like 30 years from now. And how might the communities evolve or development occur, and therefore the road network necessary to support those communities. So just if it triggers you then, then you can bring stuff back to Manager of Public Works. Good. So we will call for a vote. All those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Next item is the OPP billing model, sorry, the OPP billing relief policy update from AMO. And the recommendation is that the council of the Township of Whitewater Region direct staff to modify the 2025 operating budget as presented on November 20th, 2024, to include reductions from the provincial financial relief, 3.75% to 44%, sorry, and 44% for the 2023 OPP reconciliation costs, and hold the 2025 OPP billing provincial financial relief, 10%, in reserves, and apply these funds to the 2026 OPP billing. I'm going to get a mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Counselor Homestead, seconded by Counselor Tabbert. Excellent. And I know that the resolution is full of numbers, and therefore I know that the treasurer has prepared a brief. We'll turn the floor over to him, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you can just go to the next slide, please. So on the next slide, we talk about the, on November 20th, it was proposed to council to bring the full amount of the OPP increase for the costing for 2025 into the budget, which represented a 1.7% increase on top of the original two that was proposed, bringing us to 3.7%. That total increase of OPP costs added a total of $228,611 to our budget. Now, what has happened since that, since that presentation is the provincial government has come forward saying that they will support small municipalities with a level of funding to offset that increase of cost. The total amount was $77 million, split over all the municipalities who employ the OPP service. So this part comes into a 3.75% reduction in the 2023 reconciled costs, a 44% reduction in the overtime 2023 reconciled costs, and an overall 10% reduction in the 2025 billing cost, which is the actual amount that they bill for the year for 2025, not including road reconciliation. So of the original OPP cost increase, which is a $228,611, the Township of Whitewater Region would see a reduction in costs with this financial relief of approximately $174,250. So it's made up of $56,575 for the 2023 reconciliation costs, and $117,675 for the billing costs. You'll note, too, that I have provided all council with an internal memo and the original letter that was sent to our mayor detailing this, just to provide more detail. Next slide, please. So this is the actual breakdown of the original costs. So if you see, the first column is the description of the lines. The second column is our reconciled costs per OPP billing, and that was whenever we actually had the billing come out initially, which has been implemented in the budget so far. The financial relief percentage is what has been proposed by the provincial government through that, through that letter to our mayor. The 3.75 is applied to the basic service, calls for service, prisoner transportation, accommodation, cleaning services, and then the 44% is applied to the total overtime. The financial relief column, where I have it specified as the total amount, you'll see it comes to $56,574.27. That is the total amount of relief for the reconciliation for 2023 that they are providing, which takes our reconciliation adjustment, which was $62,611, and takes it to $6,036, substantial reduction. Then for the 2025 estimated costs, it was $1.176 million, 10% reduction of that, $117,000, comes to $1,059,000. So a total cost for the year would be $1,065,000. Prior year for 2024 was $1,010,000, so an overall increase of $54,000, which is a 5.4% increase versus what we were originally facing was a 22.6. Next slide, please. So in the recommendation, it is that the budget that was presented on November 20th be reduced by that OPP reconciliation cost of $56,575, and that the proposed 10% reduction of cost be put into a reserve. So it would still remain part of our budget, but it would be placed into a reserve to offset the cost that will be coming in 2026, because we will see the reconciliation in that year for the 2024 year, which is proposed in the range of about $148,000. So this would offset that. So this would offset that side and not have such a large impact on the budget at that point in time because of the uncertainty of the model. Right now, the way that the letter was stated, the letter only states one year as in 2025, it does not preclude or indicate anything coming forward to the future. So this is the budget impact of doing as the recommendation states. So by allocating the 2023 reconciliation relief amount of 56,575 to the 2025 budget, the effective tax levy increase for 2025 would be reduced from 7.9%, which was presented on November 20th, to 7.1%. And by not decreasing the 2025 billings by the 10% provided, but rather placing that amount in reserve, the impact on the 2026 billing costs and 2024 reconciliation are minimized to an estimated 0.52% increase impact to the levy. So rather than see potentially through, through quick math on my side, it was about 3.5% levy increase without anything being put to reserve, this mitigates that impact and spreads it out over the year and allows us to phase in this, using the provincial government's funding to phase in this increase for policing costs over the next three years to the point whenever the actual contract has been fully, all these reconciliation amounts have been fully incorporated in and we no longer see these parts and they go back to their, their new agreements and have to, because in 2027 is another year when they have to renegotiate their union contracts again. So it's just a way of us to prepare for that and put something to reserve where we had nothing before. Next slide please. So in the policing side, so what was presented originally was the, a total increase of 248,611 and it was made up of the OPP increase of $166,000, which is that year-over-year amount of billing. OPP 2023 reconciliation was 62,611 and then the police service board, which in this whole amount has not changed, of 20,000. So the amended piece would go from, see the increase decreased down to 192, $192,36. The year-over-year increase would only be $48,000. The reconciliation amount would be 6,036 and the allocation to reserve for the 2026 cost would be the 117,680. At this point in time, I have pushed forward, amended the documents already in the bylaw to come later in the budget meeting or in the council agenda to incorporate this. The part that I'm not at this point doing is I'm not allocating this to a reserve at this point in time, it is still sitting in the police services budget line item so that when we come to year end, any costs difference from the actual amount billing, whether it be due to court and prisoner transport, which was also noted in that letter, any savings or anything like that would also be, being able to be allocated to a reserve so the reserve transfer could be larger, bigger, it would be after the reconciliation of costs. The other piece to note is that by putting this amount to reserves, it, it levels out that, that increase for that 148, but also for the reintegration of that 10% because that 10% is removed for this year, but 2026 would have it re-put back onto the budget. So that 117 would be seen next year, so it just levels out that portion of it. Next slide please. So this is the last slide, so it just shows what this change represents. The tax rate was originally presented was .00789623, changes to .783755. So the total $100,000 worth of assessment would be 783,076, which is an increase of 5093 over the original 2024 amount, but in essence it's a $5.586 decrease from what was originally presented on the 20th. And then same thing below is the 179,000, so it's a 9115 rather than 10166, which is a $10.51 decrease on $179,000 median home. So that's the end of the presentation piece and the only reason that I push the portion to reserve is due to the uncertainty coming forward with the OPP billing and the fact that 2026 is the final year for their contract, the fact that they will be renegotiating and the fact that the provincial government only has so far stipulated 2025. By allowing us to have this flexibility and being gracious enough to give us a funding relief, we're able to imply or make this work out easier for the taxpayers, hopefully, and phase it in, which was not an option originally to us, than dipping into our own reserves. So that's, that's the main takeaway that I've seen from this. And luckily it was able to come ahead of our budget documents being brought to bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you treasurer. And I'm going to go to our mover first councillor Homestead.
I'd like a few more numbers please. Sorry. Yeah, I think due to the uncertainty of receiving this OPP billing annually and the fact that we have virtually no control over the billing or any input into the billing, I think this is a great recommendation to kick the can down the road, so to speak. As we know, 2026 is going to bring some uncertainty and as the treasurer said, 2027 is a new contract, so I think it's about time that we, right? I think it's about time we built up some sort of reserve for this fund. Thank you.
And councillor Tabbert, you're a secondary?
I was going to say, I was very well explained from me at least this time. Thanks.
Any other questions councillor Trim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you to the treasurer, are any other of our sister municipalities employing this strategy?
So yeah, I can answer that, that there's a few municipalities that I have talked to within the county that are doing that, they either already had a reserve in place so they're not, or don't, didn't have a reserve in place and are following a similar method to this, whether it's the full amount of the amount being put to reserve or a portion of it, there's all consensus through the municipalities that 2026 is an unknown year and they're trying to use this ability to kind of cushion the blow.
Any other members councillor Moore?
I agree with that way of thinking. I think we need a reserve and it will help in future budgets and it will help with alleviating some of the higher costs we may see down the road. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Moore, any other comments? Good, I'll just, I'll just highlight the information that was provided to us here on the desk, is it going to be added to the agenda documents?
I'll attach to the minutes.
Okay, attach to the minutes, perfect. Thank you. And I'll just note in the letter that has been sent to us from the solicitor general, the third last sentence talks about, they're going to be examining options for reviewing OPP billing model. So given that it's not clear how we're going to proceed, I think one, we're very thankful that the province is working to alleviate the pressure on our taxpayers right now and I thank them for hearing us. But going forward, we're not sure how that alleviation of pressure is going to continue into 2026, 2027 and I think at this point in time, I believe that the most prudent thing to do is exactly what you guys have discussed, to put it in a reserve, take off what we know we don't have to worry about, so reduce it from 7.9 to 7.1, hold the rest in reserve. We still have until we implement the tax rate later this spring, if they announce any further information, that we could make subsequent changes if necessary, but this is a very prudent approach in my opinion. Does that encourage any other comments? Good, treasurer, you're happy? Excellent. So with that, when we approve this motion, it's, we'll also update items, the budget documents that are listed at 13.1. So we'll automatically update those first, I think it's just the first item, is that correct treasurer?
That's correct, so schedule A is the one that will be updated in the first bylaw, I believe it's 19.
Yeah, 1719.
Yeah, so it'll be, schedule A has already been updated to that to incorporate the new amount for the policing cost with the chunk amount to be potentially put into reserve and the reduction of the $56,000 as well as to show for that and the levy amount at the top.
Perfect, just so you all acknowledge what this resolution executes. Good, if there's no other questions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? And it's carried unanimously. Thank you treasurer. Good, information items on the agenda, there are three items on the agenda. I won't speak to them, but you can see them listed there. I will offer the opportunity for any member of council that wishes to ask a question or make a comment, any of the three. Good, seeing none, we'll move on to item 12, which is announcements and I'll start with the deputy mayor.
Thank you. No, I have nothing at this time, thank you mayor.
Councillor Bell?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Councillor Tabbert?
I just have the two, which is the Beachburg Santa Claus parade Saturday night and Westmeath Santa Claus parade is Sunday evening as well. Beachburg is 5:30 and I believe Westmeath is 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Good, councillor Homestead?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councillor Moore?
I have one and this will affect the clerk as well. Earlier this week I received an email for requesting a meeting from the mayor, so I looked at it and the email didn't look right and sure enough it wasn't. So you didn't respond back, thank you. But I since have received a second one sitting here, so you're emailing me again. So for the councillors sitting around this table, you get something from the mayor saying "meeting, look at the address" and if it doesn't have township of Whitewater on it, he's not sending it. It's somebody else trying to get into your computer, so please delete them. Anything we have to follow up on clerk?
If you'd like to send it to me, I can get them whitelisted.
Okay, thank you, I'll do that. Perfect, thank you. Much better than the last time councillor Tabbert thought I was asking her to go buy gift cards for me, but good. And finally councillor Trim, any announcements? None? I just have a couple, I understand that there's been a couple birthdays. Our manager of public works, was it today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Happy birthday. Recognize your birthday and I think the deputy mayor had a birthday. We won't, we won't talk about it, but we will say happy birthday. So two birthdays that just raised my attention. Beachburg fair sent their Christmas card, it's here if you want to take a look at it. What's interesting is they provide their stats from 2024 and here they just confirmed 8,400, 8,500 visitors through the fair gates, 200 local volunteers, 6,000 hours of volunteering, 350 entries in the livestock show. So some stats like that, very neat to see, so if you want to take a look, it's just sitting here. And I was hoping if any of the staff might know about, and I was thinking, one of our staff participated in rafting competition, Whitewater rafting, is that right? Can we speak to that at all? Do you know the results of how that went?
She's back. They did place, I believe it was sixth out of the world and it was, I believe there was 20 teams from all different countries. She said it was a very, really great experience.
Perfect. If you don't mind confirming it, just pop us a quick email if that's possible as to, I understand that it was Julie and three other residents from Whitewater region?
Yeah, I'll ask her to provide something back to me and I'll provide to council.
Thank you. Good, well congratulations. Excellent, so that's the end of announcements. Bylaws. Number, item 13, the recommendation is be resolved that the bylaws listed on December 4th, 2024 agenda be taken as read and passed. As I mentioned, that includes the amendment to the very first one, 24121719 and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in total. A mover and a secondary please. Deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Homestead. Any final comments from members of council on any of the seven items listed at item 13? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Item 14 is a closed session, so we'll be going into closed for CAO performance appraisal. The recommendation is that the council of township Whitewater region move into closed session at 3:22 PM as permitted in section nine of the procedural bylaw with the CAO and acting deputy clerk Kim Ballmer to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees. A mover and a secondary please. Deputy mayor, councillor Trim. And it's not debatable, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.